Thank you all for coming tonight. It is the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It is a couple minutes after six o'clock, Thursday, November 8th, 2018. We begin each of our meetings with a moment of silence and a fledge of allegiance. Tonight, that will be led by Councilwoman Crossan.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united now and indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Roll call, please, Michelle.
Councilperson Aller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Here.
Councilperson Crossan.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Morris.
Here.
Councilperson Nassar.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. At this time, we give 30 minutes for public comments on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you don't have a copy of the agenda, they are right up here up front. So if you would like to speak to us about anything not on that agenda, now is the time to do it. Please be courteous and with respect to everybody else who might want to speak, keep your comments to around three minutes, if you would, please.
My name is Donald Hyde, and I live at 1411 Poplar Street. I am here today to say that what I was trying to accomplish all of last year has been accomplished. And what I mean by that is that the first wave, I believe three waves, because I live in Terre Haute, Indiana, I believe the second wave, the national news is wanting to not care about every single community in America, they automatically jump ahead to 2020. I think that's their mistake. The American people and the voters, they finally woke up, and they finally spoke, and they did it concisively. They gave us what the media is calling divided government, what I call democracy. No one party should control all of it unless there are problems that need to be fixed and they have answers to do the fixing. In other words, divided government should be the norm, not the regularity. We have a lot of problems in this country, and we cannot take the left side or the right side. We've got to find that middle of the road again like we used to. The word compromise cannot be a bad word. It needs to be the word we look for from both sides from the get-go. The American public simply voted that they wanted change. They wanted to be heard. They wanted concerns that they had to be at least talked about, questions asked, even if they want answers, at least ask the questions, get people, the elected officials, that's you, and that's the county council, that's the mayor, that's the state representatives, the governor, especially, and the president, to at least think about it, to ask themselves questions. If you ask no questions, if you listen to no comments, you cannot come up with any ideas to investigate for yourselves. I don't care who you are, and I really mean this, and that includes me. If you do not investigate something, ask questions, whether you like it or not the answers, then you have no way to investigate, you have no way of knowing what the problems are, and if you can't know what the problems are, you cannot ever find the solutions to those problems. With that said, I want to end with this. Like I said, this is round one. The American people have voted, and I believe that they're not going to quit this. The second part of what they've got to do now is do just what I said. They've got to do what I did. They've got to show up to meetings, the city council meetings, the school board meetings, the county council meetings. They've got to go to any chance they take to go to a state office meeting where the congressman and the senators are and listen and hear what they are saying, and ask themselves simple questions as you yourselves need to do. What is in the best interest of my family and of me and my neighbors and my community? We, in the last 20 years, have went so far away from that that all we care about is what corporate America and what business interests and what special interests want accomplished. They've got the money to spend, and that's who everybody now listens to. You stop listening and caring about the American people. That's why the election was the way it was this week, and it's going to be more next time. In 19, the city of Terre Haute is going to run for the city offices and the mayor, and you will be amazed the number of people that will show up and vote. Now, it's not going to be something on a national scale, you're right, but as far as Terre Haute and Vigo County is concerned, it will be unprecedented. That's the second wave that's coming. I hope the voters, the taxpayers, will do what I suggest here today, actually attend these meetings, attend it and talk and ask race questions, not pro or con, but the first thing we must understand is exactly what the issues are about. Whether we can make up our mind whether we're for it or against it, we have to be educated. I hope they're going to do that. Educate you, educate us, what the issues are. Then the second, the third wave, I call it, and of course, the national media calls it the second wave, will be 2020. And I assure you, make no mistake about it, more people will vote in that election, and I'm predicting it now, just like I did before. More people will vote in that election than the history of the United States in any one election. The people have woke up, and they're going to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ayer. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council this time? All right. If not, we will move on to corrections to the journal.
There are none.
Communications from the mayor.
There are none.
Reports from city officials. Councilwoman Aller.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
Within the last couple hours, I've been contacted by Michael Wright, and they have come to the conclusion that it needs to be rezoned. With that being said, I don't know if Eddie has any further comment before I go on.
My understanding is that sometimes counties receive their third-party opinion, and the basis of that opinion was that the property needed to be rezoned. That being said, the rezoning's been filed today. The general deadline for filing for consideration the following month is the first Wednesday of the month preceding the month in which it would be considered. So that deadline would have been yesterday at noon. I've been requested to inform the council that the county would request that this council consider taking action on that in December. They have a court update hearing on the federal case next week, and again, they would appreciate consideration by the council for taking action in December.
So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to hear Special Ordinance 36 for next month's city council meeting.
Second.
Those in favor, forgive me.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call. Those in favor of suspending the rules in order to hear Resolution 17? No? Yes?
Roll call. Councilperson Aller.
Yes.
Councilperson Azar.
Yes.
Councilperson Crossan.
No.
Councilperson Elliott.
Yes.
Councilperson Garrison.
No.
Councilperson Morris.
Yes.
Councilperson Nation.
No.
Councilperson Nassar.
Yes.
Councilperson Devon.
Yes.
That is six yes, three no.
All right, rules have been suspended, and we can act on that next month.
A point of order.
Please.
I was always under the impression that it had to be an unanimous vote to suspend our rules. Is that wrong?
Two-thirds.
Eddie, would you like to respond to that, please?
I knew that would be a question we've reviewed, because we've had so many amendments recently to our council rules. I was curious about that fact as well. I defer to Michelle. There's nothing stated in our council rules with regard to the suspension of the rules. The only thing that's in writing is with regard to the order of the agenda, which can be done by a motion of second majority or on a motion of the president, him or herself. The only other mention of anything with regard to the rules is if there would be an amendment to the council rules that requires a two-thirds vote. So if nothing's in the rules, we defer to Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order calls for generally a two-thirds vote, and I believe firmly that that rule would apply in this case.
Thanks for that explanation.
Reports, any further reports from city officials?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety.
There are none.
Reports from standing committees.
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees.
There are none.
Items previously tabled.
Resolution 15, 2018, a resolution concerning the International Paper Site.
Petitioner.
I guess I'll play the role of petitioner. As you remember, we brought this forward, Councilwoman Crossan and I, with the help of Eddie and others, to try to force the issue of rezoning. I would note that the resolution says that, it asks for an explanation, which we still have not received, and I look forward to reading that explanation, actually, so that I can understand what their current reasoning is or their current thinking is. I'll yield for now.
Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak on Resolution 15 or Council. Councilman Nassar.
Eddie, did they call, did Michael Wright call, or did he send an email pointing at what you told us previously?
He called.
Okay. Did you ask for their written opinion from whoever the council was?
I did not. By the time I was informed of where they were at and what their position was, the goal was making sure we considered how they would go about getting that filed and getting that question before the council.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Morris.
So apparently, their application for a variance was not approved from the third party.
No, and that presumably would most certainly have been withdrawn at this point.
So, okay.
I'm not sure that it has been, but that did come up in our discussion, that that would be, if it hasn't been already.
Right, that they couldn't do.
The variance would only apply to the M2 zoning. They're now required, now petitioning or requesting that it be rezoned, the penitentiary zoning, so the variance would have zero effect at that point.
Thank you, I yield.
Councilman.
Well, it sounds to me like since that opinion has come forward from the county, that this resolution at this point in time is kind of a moot point, because it was requesting them to rezon, which evidently they are abiding by coming to the council asking for rezoning. Is that correct?
I don't want to necessarily give my opinion on that. I think that would be the petitioner. I'm not sure if Councilperson Nation or Councilwoman Crossan have a different view of that. My personal view is that the primary goal was to...
I'll reword it. In your legal opinion, your opinion as our counsel, they have said, let's take this resolution off the table for now, they have said that they want to, they are willing to come to this council and seek a rezoning of that property.
Correct.
Okay. That's, that was my point. The resolution had asked for that, I believe that they're doing that.
Councilman Crossan.
I would just say that it does appear that they, it doesn't appear, they have filed a motion, a petition to rezon. This hasn't been filed, correct, what we have before? They have previously filed petitions for rezoning and at the last minute withdrawn them without explanation, and we also do not have, you know, did Mike say, excuse me, a question for you, Eddie, did Mike Wright, when he talked with you, indicate they had gotten a written opinion?
Yes, he did.
Okay. So we haven't received that yet, and so my concern is that we could find ourselves back here in December with another situation where it's been withdrawn, and then a month or so down the road, have them back here again requesting again. And so I think, in my mind, making ourselves, our point clear of where we think we should, you know, where we stand on this with regard to the city's interest, is still an active concern.
Councilman Nation.
Mr. President, if there's no further discussion, I move for approval of Resolution 15, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilman Nassar, that we approve Resolution 15, 2018. Councilman Ayer.
Is the interpretation that all we want to see happen is existing law followed relating to this? Isn't that basically what this says?
That's my interpretation.
No more, no less?
And it's...
And we will take action, any action we can take, to make sure law is followed.
That was the intent.
Yes.
Okay.
End of sentence. I yield. Okay, motion is on floor by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilman Nassar.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Councilperson Aller.
Yes.
Councilperson Azar.
No.
Councilperson Crossan.
Yes.
Councilperson Elliott.
Yes.
Councilperson Garrison.
Yes.
Councilperson Morris.
No.
Councilperson Nation.
Yes.
Councilperson Nassar.
Yes.
Councilperson Devon.
Yes.
That's seven yes, two no.
All right, the resolution passes. Tax abatements for confirmation.
There are none.
Items on second reading.
General Ordinance 8, 2018, amending City Code Chapter 8, Article 1, Section 8-24, specific maximum speeds, Dobbsdale Street, Dobbs Glen Street, Burn Dale Drive, and Hall of Brook Court.
Petitioner.
My name is Tricia Tanus, and I'm president of the Dobbsland Homeowners Association. I worked with counsel for the city, Eddie Felling, to put this ordinance resolution together, and this is simply, we wanted our, in our neighborhood, to be not the default 30 miles an hour, we wanted to be reduced to 25 miles an hour. We're in a small neighborhood, you have 72 homes in our neighborhood, and we just would like people to drive a little bit slower, we have lots of kids and people. That's it.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on General Ordinance
Donald Hyde, as I said last week, or last time we met, I asked a simple question, and I believe I got enough response to know that there is a school near where this speed limit is to be reduced. With that said, I believe that it is imperative that we reduce the speed limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on this ordinance? Council.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
If there's no further discussion, I move that General Ordinance 8, 2018 be adopted.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilman Morris, that we approve the Ordinance 8, 2018. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, passes. Items on first reading.
Appropriation 15, 2018, $250,000 from EMS reimbursement, 0270-0027-00346010, to EMS Services Contractual Number 0270-0027-00432010.
Petitioner.
Mr. Councilman, President, Deputy Chief Hall, Terre Haute Department, I'm here to answer any questions for this.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to ask a question or speak on Appropriation 15, 2018?
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
This is a first reading, so to take action tonight, we need to vote to vote, right?
Yes.
I move that we vote to vote on Appropriation Number 15, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilman Elliott, that we take action tonight on Appropriation 15, 2018. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. I move that we adopt Appropriation Number 15, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Aller, that we approve Appropriation 15, 2018. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appropriation passes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Appropriation 16, 2018, $5,500 from Fire Prevention Number 0750-0000-00342250, to EMS Gasoline Number 0270-0027-02422010.
Petitioner.
Council President, Deputy Chief Hall, Terre Haute Fire, I'm here to answer any questions about this.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on Appropriation 16, 2018? Council. Councilman Nassar.
I had a few questions regarding this transfer with fire prevention. Why is it being transferred to EMS when that was to be for inspections and fire prevention?
The fire prevention part of it is, this is to help offset the gasoline for the prevention vehicles, for the five vehicles that actually go out and do preventions every day. That comes off the EMS budget, and it wasn't really figured in last year when we budgeted to have the increased movement that they would have. So this is to help cover that, is what it's for.
Okay, well, last year, last week, we approved Appropriation 14 for transfer of $90,000 for contractual services for overtime, and one of the things that Chief Fisher had spoken about was the fact that we had to take care of some floating positions that didn't necessarily need filled until January. Why didn't we use some of that funds for the EMS instead of the fire prevention fund?
Why didn't we use some of the fire, off the fire side of it, or?
Yeah, the 90,000 that were transferred.
I'd have to ask the Chief Fisher about that one, I'm not for sure. I just know with the fire prevention, since the prevention guys, the gasoline, that this comes up to the amount of gasoline that they basically use for the year.
So they use, is it five days, five days a week, they use those five vehicles?
Five days a week, they use the vehicles, yes. And weekends too, because they're on call as well, for weekends, for investigations.
Okay. I yield.
Councilwoman Aller.
If there's no further questions, I move that we vote to vote on Appropriation 16, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Aller, seconded by Councilman Nation, that we take action tonight on Appropriation 16, 2018. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. I want Fisher to come and answer those questions next week, next month, excuse me, next month.
We cannot take action on that this evening. Having said that, next item, please.
Resolution 16, 2018, transfer of $260,000 in the edit budget.
Petitioner.
Mr. President, members of the council, Chuck and a city engineer. This transfer is a transfer of budgeted funds into our sidewalk maintenance line item. There was a, there was a little bit of a, there was a little bit of a problem with encumbrance. This is actually to pay for the 2018 work order. When we did our encumbrances last year, this money was not encumbered, so we needed to transfer the money to cover our expenses in 2018. So, I have to answer any questions.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on Resolution 16, 2018? Council. Councilwoman Crossan.
Yeah, Mr. Anderson, is, is this work that is done, that was planned?
Yes, this is the, this is the work, this is the 2018 work order that we, we're in process of replacing sidewalks right now.
Okay. Is, is it a portion of that amount for the, I mean, is 260 the full amount, or is that a portion of it?
260 plus the 63, the other, the other transfer there from infrastructure improvements covers the first work, covers work order number one for 2018.
Okay, and it was just left out of the 2018 budget?
No, this was budgeted funds. The problem was that we didn't have money encumbered from last year's budget to pay. Last year's work order was being done at the first of 2018. So we spent the 2018 money on 2017's work order, so we need to encumber that money into 2018.
I'm sorry, that doesn't make any sense to me.
We had the contract to do, let's say, 2017's work order, okay? We had the contract in hand, we had budgeted money in 2017. That money was not rolled over, encumbered into 2018. So we use 2018's budget money to pay for the 2017's work. Now we need to pay for 2018's work.
Why wasn't the 2017 money encumbered?
It was oversight in the Controller's Office, I don't know why.
So will that put us in the same position in the coming year, that we will have work being done in 2019?
We are quickly running through...
We won't have the money to pay for?
No, we're, the 2018 work order is in process right now, and hopefully, it'll get done before the end of the year.
Will we have enough money there to do it, and to pay for it?
With the, with the transfer, we will, yes.
With the transfer.
Mr. President.
Yes, Michelle.
Maybe I can give a little more clarification, just transferring money in our budget. This is a non-refering budget, so the money doesn't go away, but it's edit, so it has to have money in specific lines. So there's always money in edit that's never been appropriated to a line, and that's why what Mr. Ennis is referring to, moving it into the line. So there's always money in edit that's not set aside for a project, and each year, there's a new budget. So if the money wasn't spent in 17, it just goes back and floats in the edit and not in a specific line. So he has to move it in 18 to a specific line to spend it.
Thank you, Michelle, sorry. Go ahead.
And I'm not trying to give you a hard time, Chuck, I'm just trying to figure out as a matter of process, shouldn't that have been encumbered at an early date in 2000, during the 2018 budget to have it available to spend? I mean, why are we here at the end of the year encumbering that money, is my question, rather than doing it earlier?
I think we weren't notified of the fact that the money was not encumbered until, oh, probably a month ago, six weeks ago.
And who are you notified by?
Controller's Office.
I'm just trying to figure out how this happens.
Well, at the end of, at the end of every year, like this, this time of the year, the Controller's ask, Controller's Office asks us for projects that we need to encumber into next year, because our projects don't stop. We have to have a, we have to have a contract in hand, signed, approved contract, so that money can roll over into next year. So during that process last year, we'd filled out all the paperwork to encumber the funds, and I think it's probably because of the new software package, we weren't notified of it until later, that the funds were not encumbered.
Councilman Nassar.
Chuck, I think you're being very kind to the Controller's Office, because then we have an issue yesterday with the, or this week with the sanitary board with the budget regarding the controller not doing something.
I don't know. What's your... Um, I don't know what you're referring for.
It was in paper about them not doing, presenting a budget to DLGF.
Oh, um, there was part of that, yes, there was part of the sanitary district budget, actually wastewater treatment plant's budget that somehow got lost. I'm not sure where it is.
I don't think you should be the one that had to answer these questions. Uh, I'm not going to vote to have action on this. I think we need to have Wesley here to answer some of these questions. But I did have a few more regarding clarification. On our edit line item, we had four hundred thousand budgeted. So with this transfer, is that saying that we're going to do two hundred and sixty thousand plus with the work sidewalk this year?
We do. I'm sure enough.
Okay. I have the budget for edit and we budgeted four hundred thousand for sidewalks as of July because that's the last month reports that we've received. It says that we spent two hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So are you saying that we've done two hundred and forty-one plus this amount that we didn't do previously?
Yes.
Okay. So are we going to do another hundred and fifty-nine thousand more?
We will spend all, we will spend the, the work order, I'm not sure what the exact amount of the work order for twenty eighteen is, but I think it's three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
Okay. So that work that we're trying to make the numbers work, I guess, was that done this year or last year?
We had twenty seventeen's work order started, started last year and extended into this year.
Okay.
So we've been doing, some, part of this year was including twenty seventeen's work order.
So I guess sidewalk work is a little bit different than asphalt work. You can do that year round?
Yes.
Okay. I yield.
Uh, Councilman Elliott.
Chuck, the question I have that I know you can't answer, so you can relax. Why wasn't the two thousand seventeen work order paid for in two thousand seventeen?
Uh, the contractor got started late and didn't finish. So we had to encumber the money and then finish it up in eighteen.
Okay. Um, why didn't they finish?
Uh, I don't, I don't recall. I don't...
Who's the contractor?
I'm sorry? Um, it varies from year to year. We bid it every year.
Who, who was the contractor for two thousand seventeen that didn't finish?
I think it, I think it was ST, but I might have to go back and look.
So we don't pay till they do it all? Is that what you're saying? We don't pay till they finish everything in the work order?
No, no, we pay as we go.
So how much was unpaid at the end of December?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay. Well, that, that's another controller question that I'd kind of like to know because I, I know we made a payment in early two thousand eighteen, you know, some two hundred and some thousand dollars. And, you know, December, January, February, it, it's hard to put down cement, it's hard to do sidewalks because the temperature's got to be so high. You can't, you know, you don't do it when it's cold, extremely cold, or if you do do it when it's extremely cold, it's more expensive because you got to cover it and cure it properly and so on and so forth. That's what I understand from that, you know, that process. So I would like to think when we get to like Thanksgiving, you know, most of that work should be, should be done for two thousand eighteen. So are they going to complete two thousand eighteen's work?
They're, they're on schedule to complete it by the end of the year.
So how long does their schedule take them into the, towards the end of the year?
They've been working, I mean, they've been working on this for probably three months now in twenty eighteen. Work order number one, twenty eighteen has probably been going on for about three months.
Okay. And, and how many more months do they have to go?
What do you mean? Till the end of the year?
Yeah, I mean, to, to finish. How many more, what percent done are they?
They're probably about eighty percent done. They're trying to get, they're trying to get it buttoned up before the end of the year.
Okay. I yield.
Councilman Crossan.
And I have one more question. I, I don't think, or last this one came up to me when he was asking questions. When did the two thousand seventeen work get finished?
Uh, it was probably April of this year.
So it didn't get finished until April, but even if it did, why were, and again, this may not be a question for you, but a question I have is why are we just now encumbering funds for that two thousand, two thousand seventeen work?
Actually, these funds are for the twenty eighteen work.
Well, for the, for the twenty eighteen work or for the two thousand seventeen work done in eighteen?
Two thousand seventeen work done in eighteen.
And that's because, and the reason this is for the two thousand, we're encumbering funds for the two thousand seventeen work done in eighteen?
The encumbrance, the encumbrance was not done.
I understand that.
We need the money to encumber from, for that, that contract because twenty eighteen funds were paid, were used to pay the seventeen work order. I mean, it's all coming out of sidewalks. I'm not...
No, no, I, I know.
Yeah.
But as a matter of process, I guess, and I, again, I, you're just the person here. I don't, I don't, I don't think you're the person that this is a question is for. But for, as a matter of process, I think it would be clearer to everyone if, when that work was done in two thousand eighteen or slightly before when it was done, had we encumbered the money from edit at that point for that part of the work or done it before the two thousand eighteen budget was passed so that now we're not at, almost at the end of two thousand eighteen, taking care of two thousand seventeen work or work that was to be done in two thousand seventeen? Again, I don't know if that's a question for you. It's just a, it's just a concern I have that we're here almost at the end of two thousand eighteen cleaning up this mess that was caused by not being dealt with in two thousand seventeen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Azar.
Do you need this two hundred and sixty thousand between now and December?
Yes.
Okay. Then I would suggest, I mean, we can't hold up what you have to have done, what you need done, but I would certainly think that the controller needs to answer the questions that of course Mr. Ennis really shouldn't have to answer, but we shouldn't hold up what he needs. These, it's all out of edit, is that correct?
Yes.
You're just going from one edit line to another edit line?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I yield.
Mr. President.
He's got to have the money then I'm going to make these motions, but we're going to
have to, this is the first reading, is that correct, Michelle?
It's a resolution. Uh, Councilperson Garrison.
So we just make a motion. All right. I make a motion to approve Resolution sixteen, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilman Garrison, seconded by Councilman Morris, that we approve Resolution sixteen, two thousand eighteen. Discussion. Councilman Crossan.
I did, and I, I think this is what George asked, I just want to make sure I'm clear. You have to have this approved before our first meeting in December?
We need it before the end of the year. It would be nice.
Oh.
That's a different, that's a different answer. Because I think it's, I, I will vote no on, on it. I will vote no on it tonight because I, I don't think you should be the person here answering those questions.
And thank you. My question was, do you need it before December? I meant the December meeting. I apologize. Maybe you misunderstood what I said.
I was thinking you were talking about by the end of the year.
The reason I said that is because there's so many questions concerning why this wasn't done that really the controller needs to answer and I was going to make a motion to table it until December.
Okay.
If that would work and you can do whatever you need to do between now and those meetings and the first meeting, really, right? Yeah, the first meeting. Would that work?
I think so.
Okay. Then at that case, I would ask that maybe Mr. Garrison withdraw his motion and then we can table this to the December meeting if, if he's, well, yeah, you don't have to table, you still have to vote on it, but...
I'm just, I'm just waiting for your yield. Mr. President, I'm, I'll withdraw my motion based on the conversation we just had.
Okay. The motion has been withdrawn.
Did we table it? I thought we did. I moved the table resolution, whatever it is, I can't see without my glasses, sixteen.
Till the December sixth.
To the first meeting of December.
Second. It has been moved by Councilman Azar and seconded by Councilman Garrison that Resolution sixteen, two thousand eighteen be tabled until our first meeting in December. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is tabled.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Aller, that we adjourn the meeting. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
There you go.